Probably send yours down further to the back. So we can do this again.
Yes. Um, do you want to put it? Yeah, just give it to the J P.
Just put it down there in front of you. And I think that will be fine.
Okay, that'll catch us. We're loud.
Just talk loud.
Be louder, Joe.
It's very echoey.
It is echoey, yes.
All right, we are at the
Hold on, let's say.
Work session.
Just to square up the name.
October 23rd, it is seven something, seven?
Oh, seven, oh, seven.
Seven oh seven. Um, before we start with the code rewrite information, I just have one thing to just ask for. You guys want to think about this? The community room rental agreement we've talked about several times. We are in the process of finalizing the community rental agreement form. I would go over to Jesse for him to do this final review of. Um, but a couple of things came about, um, that I just kind of wanted to find out what your guys' thoughts are. So number one, we have a particular price right now. We have people that are trying to rent the room. Do you guys want us to wait until it passes next week, next Thursday? So we're quite a bit, it's this Thursday. So we have somebody coming in tomorrow and do you want us to wait because there's a new price? Do you want us to wait and go with?
We should finalize the agreement, go to the council before we let someone sign it.
Perfect.
If they're coming tomorrow, they can come on Friday.
They can come next week, okay, so.
You just Friday, go ahead and sign on Thursday, if the capacity has emergency, you can't wait to use it.
Perfect. So then the second question is, if you guys want to have any discussion, um, having parties and food and drink and things like that is one thing. That's why we kind of bought out $150. But then, you know, I just kind of started thinking about what about the person that just wants a meeting class or a book club or something like that, so. Sorry. When it's a kid, it doesn't silence.
Oh.
Um, okay, so the question is, um, if we want to have two lines of rental or if we just want to put like an asterisk at the mayor, it's at the mayor's discretion. If it is a different type of party, do you guys want to leave it all at 150? It doesn't matter what it is. Um, I just thought, you know, for residents that aren't really using it for anything other than maybe like a little class or something like that, isn't necessary that they pay 150 dollars. Again, parties with food and cake and all that kind of stuff, I think is really why we did this. But I don't know if you guys want to just talk about it next week? You guys want to think about it or if you want to spend three minutes talking about it right now? That's, does everybody want to leave it at 150 or do you guys want to have either a clause or two lines?
I think waving actually is fine, but if we wish to already, I was interested.
Mm-hmm, that's fine, so. Do you guys agree with that or?
I think waving, it needs to be written down very detailed though. I don't think a line of mayor's discretion, because then it's just one person saying, yeah, it's fine, you don't have to pay. And it just, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying at all that I think you're, you know.
Why am I under?
Yeah, or whoever the next mayor is, but even just the look of, well, why did you pay and we didn't? Oh, because whoever's mayor said we were good.
Right.
But if it comes down to, I mean, obviously like M B C A or way scouts or girl scout, that's already in there. And then I bring a book club or if someone wanted to do a water painting as long as, you know, obviously if they were paying money, charging them. But if just eight residents wanted to come here on a Saturday and do water painting, I'd say probably not good. Um.
How about?
You think that's easy?
Yeah. Yeah.
Without food or drink.
That was what my thought was, if you didn't have food or drink, you know, litter, you know, if it's not too clear.
That's the next thing.
Well, I mean, at the same time, book clubs are, they're about.
They're going to bring order.
They're gonna have, they're gonna have something to drink.
But I think there's not, right, fifteen hunches, cake and walking around with kids and pretzels and stuff like that.
But then you're just, you're saying.
I just don't think so.
Because I think it's happening.
Because you have to clean up more.
Do you guys then think about it and if you guys want to amend it? If you guys want to do that or if you guys want to shoot emails and I can always send something?
I think the, yeah, I think you could differentiate between food and no food. Because I think, well, I mean, think about even a knitting collection, they could be bringing in something to drink. I think we're talking more about.
Food and drink for others, like if you're bringing in.
Like a buffet or.
Well, I mean, I was saying like some Minerva Park book club, their meats, meats are supposed to be wine and cappuccino. I mean, they, they, they bring food and drink, people bring, say, those things like that.
And I think the only other.
There's gotta be food and drink if you get people in here doing whatever.
Right.
And I think the only other thing that's not really addressed in here is, do we have like a three hour limit? A four hour limit? Does, can somebody just come in at eight o'clock in the morning and stay until eight o'clock at night for the same amount of money? We've never really discussed that too, like what if there's a birthday party in the morning and then somebody wants to have something in the evening? We can't do that if we just let somebody have it all day. So do you guys want to do like a, you know, between this time and this time? I don't know how, you know, you start thinking about all these different things. Do you guys care? Do you guys?
I, I think all of that starts getting into context.
At one, right.
So one a day. First comes whoever booked it first for the day, it's booked first for the day and that's it.
What if we say like, okay, but you're allowed to specify the time it will be out if they decide to be out? So that way you give the opportunity for somebody else to have it.
And then, and then we need to have somebody come in, ensure it's clean, clean it.
Because then you have, yeah, this, this was messy, that must have been the party before me. Did you have anyone in here at the party that? Yeah, that was here when we got here. And you didn't send someone in at four o'clock on Saturday to check? And I got here at five o'clock and I tell you that statement was there, I don't know where it came from. And we have no way to dispute it other than them arguing with each other, saying, no, we didn't have that.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave one a day and then I will see if we can come up with some wording to, um, maybe no food, no this or that. Now, you guys can.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think, my notes show that the last place we stopped on September 7th was at, what is page 64 of 179 in my document? It's the chapter 1252, Urban Residential District. I had then added a backslash R12 residential, obstructed the public schools and parks. That is the last thing I had. So I think we got through 1252, Urban Residential.
Yes, and then that moves on to, uh, totally through this plan residential district. Now, this district we did not propose any changes to, as this was the district done before the MI subdivision happened in 2013 when they were initially conceiving of it, uh, so it was a planned district in place when officially they annexed and were zoned at that time.
Yep.
Um, and so we simply noted that it needs to be a reference item on here, I think.
Yep.
And again, another, another reference, 67.
Can you just clarify why you differentiated, um, Jordan Road as a separate district?
We haven't gotten to that. But we did it and we will.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, it's a good question. It is, yeah.
So, uh, there's no questions on the plan residential district. We don't want to spend the necessary time on it.
Yep.
The next one under, on, in, on the way for the plan legacy district is the 1254 Urban Institutional District. This is for several of the commercial type districts. Um, this one encompasses, um, we, it's an institutional district. What we did under the zoning map and out there, we probably find the zoning map and throw it back up here. There it is. Um, so what we, what we proposed to do is zone the, the institutional district is all of this area here. We put the school, we put the school into it, and we put our pool into it. Uh, the only other, oh, and I'm sorry, it looks like we go through the, oh, yeah, this is all the schools area here. Uh, it was all placed into it and.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, is that also, uh, the mental or the?
Yes, the, the drug we have facility, current use, uh, former, um, assisted living facility is right here. It was already in this type of district. Uh, and so this was, uh, this is all consistent with that particular district. What we did do from a code standpoint is we will note that we have in some places changed this specifically limited to the following. Uh, I think you have that same draft. And a lot of it has to do with a lot of financial district uses, insurance title companies. Uh, there are positions in surgeons, chiropractors, et cetera, et cetera. And what we did is that we, we took out all the catchall so that it was limited to just those particular items for our suggestion.
I'm now noting that we did get to this because I have a diatric.
Yeah, we did that.
We'll keep zipping along.
Yep.
Easy, easy.
No, that catch at common.
Uh, neighborhood commercial district was the next one on the list. Uh, I think, I think it's highlighted because I don't think we got to it.
No, that's the one.
This is where we stopped to have the continuing discussion, okay.
Yeah.
Very good. So I'm sure many of you had an opportunity by this point to look at the N C E and look at, obviously the way it currently reads is keyword including, um, maybe of our, unfortunately, a number of our residents that stuck that is limiting, which is very clear definition of separation from the semantic standpoint. Uh, we are open to some discussion of that, I think, as to far, we can, we can change it to a limited to. We can, as we did up in the previous district, we can, you know, alter some of these uses. We can add in conditional uses, you know, there's a number of things. There are already a couple of conditional uses here, uh, which are just automotive services and driving or outdoor service facilities. You know, we can add any number of uses if there are suggestions, you know, on the board for what people would like to see done in this, in this area. Basically includes everything in this urban, obviously institutional, uh, and includes other service related industries and retail shops. Because it's, it's considered our general catchall for commercial, because we only have two major arterial or commercial places.
No, I don't think so.
I don't actually.
I say we streamline it and just like every other section says limited to, we change it here to also say limited to.
Well, here's my only comment to that. And that's fine, we, none of our others had been that way. So just on the previous district, did we, for the sake of discussion, based on, you know, did we add it to to say you could, could limit it to these specific areas? So I would say that if we do that, it will, it will entail going through all of the districts and specifically limiting all of them.
I think it's funny that it says liquor stores, we can't have liquor stores.
Why not?
Well, yeah, I guess we can, why not?
I think we can, we can.
You can, but you, well, you just have to jump through it, not a billion, you know.
Right, the person who wants to vote, yes, you can, you can get there.
I'm the first person here.
Yeah, it's a zone, it's permitted zoning, but.
So we want to, our neighborhood commercial district, we want to put, or it's been moved or brought up that we would move to limited to hardware stores, grocery stores, meat and fish markets, fruit stores and vegetable markets, candy nut and confectionery, dairy product, retail, bakeries, drugstores and proprietary stores. What is exactly a proprietary store?
I mean, we have to define, I'm sure back in the day in 89, they had an idea what a proprietary store was.
Should we just take that out? We don't even know what it is.
Yeah, I mean, I, if no one up here and no one down there could tell me what that is.
My assumption would be if you said drugstore, I would assume that a cigar, cigar store would also be inclusive in proprietary store.
Let's take it out.
It was a specific type of retail use.
Proprietary grocery store is a bulk food store, you might say. Something like G M S.
Is a bulk, the bulk food store.
Wouldn't that be like a gross, is that like, I don't, I want it to be as clear as, I don't want any.
You want clear.
Yeah, I would clear.
So, so again, the, the difficulty of making it, making this all limited to is that the list then either needs to be exhaustive or we need to prepare ourselves for basically any kind of new class comes in. We need to either amend this or grant variances, which is administratively, in my opinion, not the best way to go about things, right? So if we just add this list and we put it limited to, right? And smoker friendly wanted to move in, right? It's not, tobacconist isn't on the list. So now they either need to apply for variance or we need to amend our code. So then we're. That's, that is.
Yes.
That's, that is, in my opinion, not very business friendly. That is, in my opinion, again, administratively, I have.
There's not that many businesses that we have to do this all the time. It's not like there's like seven businesses that go in and out.
I think Jason rattled off the businesses that are already there and several of them aren't explicitly in this list, right? So, A, right, so we already know that there are businesses not in this list.
Liquor store, the tax store, it's not a tax store, it's a tax preparer.
Cell phone store, next to the sex.
Cell phone store, right. So again, if this body is saying that the only way to do this is limited to, we better put on a pot of coffee and start making out a list and be prepared to argue about why or, why or why not certain things go in the list. Right, there's, there's grouping here too, I just want to point that out. So that's, we just, I zoom down the list here, so the personal services, you know, there's business and professional offices and there's retail stores prior. So this is a, this, you know, it can get sticky. Uh, but like restaurants, I don't believe are anywhere.
Uh, eating and drinking.
Oh, it is, it is.
Yeah.
All right, uh, childcare, because I believe we have childcare, we also have a tutoring. Childcare is not specifically called out and so we've always interpreted that as, personal services generally involve the care of the person or his or her personal effects. But if we then follow that little limited to, the things on the list.
Right, it's no longer.
Those will become legal nonperformance until at such time that they cease to exist. Because that's many of these. Which is again, why I'll, I'll take this opportunity to advocate that I think including or to call out as for example. But then if there are things that we want to, um, because in my opinion, I am more concerned with behaviors, right? Like, as long as it's a legal business, I really don't care that it's there, but it being there can't unreasonably burden our residents. So for example, if parking is a concern, right, any business, we, we, I believe we should give the craft language. It says, any business with anticipated customer volume that exceed their available parking needs to have a plan. And that plan needs to be presented to the village. That puts the directive on the, the business and it means they have to have a plan.
Okay, so how is that going to affect us administratively? And how is that, is, how is that concrete enough for us?
That, well, I would say administratively, that is way less than any new business coming in needing a variance, right? I would say that, because again, it's, it's a business.
What's the policy?
Has anticipated customer volume that will exceed their available parking, which is a much smaller subset of businesses.
What's the process for getting a variance?
Well, the process is, so this is kind of unique, so we're talking about a use variance here, which is not recommended, right? Well, what we want to see, if we want to see, if you don't like certain uses, you want to see them put into, uh, either you stricten them out explicitly or if you're okay except for the conditions, we want to see them placed in conditional uses. And then there's an extra step of the process and there's a negotiating, then you go on with a particular user.
Okay.
So use variances are very problematic. It's also known as spot subjecting. So Jesse, you talked about all the nastiness that goes on with that in the court cases, but it's not something that we want to see. It's not something we recommend.
Okay.
So.
Great. I, I think if, just from a very hot 30,000 foot view, any zoning code is subject to skepticism at a court level because it undercuts property rights and the common law was in favor of property rights. So when you start limiting rather than broadly illustrating, courts can look skeptical of that. Which is why I can't name to you a, a zoning code in the villages and cities that we represent that outside of very small areas that limit to certain uses. They are all, including, it's an illustrative list. And then if there are, what I wouldn't say problematic uses, but uses that.
Impactful.
More impactful, yes, uh, than there's the conditional use process. So it doesn't specifically restrict anyone, it just imposes conditional uses so that if a municipality is concerned about a specific use based on the impact that it has on the surrounding community, then it can impose an additional sort of check on that to ensure that conditions are met that alleviate that impact.
Do those additional conditions need to be delineated in advance? So do, does that mean that this is a conditional use and these are the conditions?
Um, yes, I would think the more specific that you could be on the conditions, the more likely those conditions would be upheld. So that people know what they are striving to do and it eliminates sort of arbitrary enforcement.
Sure, so here, okay, I'm gonna, this is totally off topic, what needs to be done, so I can stop searching. I can't find the email for this, my email's only showing me like the last 10 days and I don't want to mess with that. Eric, could you reemail that to me as large as that screen is? In the second furthest away slot, I am swimming a lot even with glasses to read them. And that was my interruption there. And so is our mayor, so. So having heard that, I, I want, I have a question that may lead to a secondary proposal. Can we have that illustrative list listed as limited to and then say all other uses may, may be approved conditionally? Or maybe, can you, can we have a very broad conditional use category, as broad as, as we can? And then we lay out, these are the conditions. It has to meet, uh, certain health, safety, wellness standards, has to meet certain parking standards. I would, I would, yes, but I would, it would have done in a couple of ways. I propose that you either do a planned district, right? Then everything is negotiable within the district and the user. Now, that can be problematic, we have a retail center, we talked about that later. Now, nonetheless, there's, that's one option. Um, your other option, which I was talking to Jesse a little bit about today and some other examples at different municipalities, is we could implement an overlay district, i.e. traffic and parking as an example to be specific. You know, if there are concerns that need to be addressed, we can implement an overlay under the neighborhood control onto the arterial corridors, right? We can call it any number of things, because it can also apply to 161, right? Um, for, or say about three, even for our businesses down there. We could apply an overlay that would encompass controls on certain things that we found to be particularly impactful, i.e. the traffic, okay? And so anyone coming in that meets certain thresholds could then, would then need to implement, you know, parking, make sure that parking was met, make sure, in residential streets as an example, for access, yada, yada, yada. There's, there's, you could do several things.
Do we have it set up?
Can you go into detail about that? Can you elaborate a little bit more?
Well, I think, so, so to be elaborate, what, what, just so I can lay this out a little bit, I would like very much to get through this evening's zoning code that is agreeable to everyone. We will, so we're done with this, right? We can come back and obviously, because there's still several things to talk about specific to our zoning code to finish it up. We obviously have a lot of discussion on the neighborhood commercial district and in some discussion today. We, we can be elaborated on some of the examples that, that I think would be helpful. But that's a whole other meeting, I think, longer than tonight's meeting. We, we, we might be able to get through it.
We might, no, Eric, it, to, to do those conditions, like Brian mentioned, we would, I, we would need to know what conditions you want. And I don't know if the, if.
We need to go.
Shooting from the hip on what that is.
Right, 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 right.
Can be, I don't know if like a craft in anything that makes sense.
Conditions such as employee parking can only take up 25% of available lots, something like that.
Sure, that's very, that's common.
You can't park your, how you say, um, customers' vehicles on any roadways impairing traffic in any way, shape or form. Um, you can't shut down any roads for your business, things of that nature. Um. Do we have anything on hours of operation in any of these?
No, that's another example that you could, I mean, hours of operation is something that can be imposed upon as well within the district.
I went back and looked at the Minerva Park code and it was talking about like how it was written back, back in the days and stuff like that. How so, I don't, blah, 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 blah. Anything that falls out, outside of that, I think it should go to like a committee that reviews it. Like if you're not in a family oriented, you know what I mean? Like those conditions you kind of talked about a little bit, or am I wrong or are you?
No, I, all I would say is what that invites is, unless you have a crystal clear definition of what we mean by that, it invites arbitrary application.
I see.
And so what, why zoning codes are written the way this one is, which is.
Very neutral.
Sale of household goods, personal consumption, is because that gives business owners enough notice to know that what, what they consume is in the permitted zone. So if we get into a, a place where like the Minerva Park Village Council is trying to interpret what the framers of the Minerva Park zoning code in 1989 meant by household, that is not a place they want to be.
Right. No, but I was just kind of.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I think it's a fair question.
Same up for 2023 in the sense that it does make sense and it does, you know, how.
I mean, I think there's certain conditions that we already hear about, like, like right now, a good example with Fear Columbus, right? This is their busy season. We're getting the noise complaints about from over there. We're getting traffic, the lights that they use that are shining up in the air.
Sure.
Um, the hours of operation for them, I think all of that is, you know.
Yeah.
There's stuff that we don't want within the village itself, you know? We can't control them, but.
Right, you want at least, uh, you want at least conditions that limit the impact of those adverse effects on the residents.
But at the end of the day, it's a residential neighborhood, right?
Right, so like to.
Well, yes. A neighborhood, or.
Adjacent.
Yeah.
Right.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so are we skipping over 1256 right now and moving on and circling back?
I think we put a little pin in that.
Yeah, I, I, what I would say is.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Now we come back with some exact, like you kind of stated, what do we want to, you know?
Sure, conditions on neighborhood commercials as a whole. Um, would I say, would, would it be fair to say that if we have conditions that mitigate those concerns, noise, traffic, parking, et cetera, et cetera, that we would be okay with leaving it as an illustrative list and not limiting it to?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
As long as you are able to reassure me that there's not something else that could cause potential problems, that we're not. What I'm worried about is that we're not foreseeing a potential problem in the future.
Like some, 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 I'm looking some other use.
Right, so like, I think you told me that that's not possible, but like adult bookstore or something like that.
Adult bookstores are very different.
Right.
It is.
But it's just, that's my example of things that, you know what I mean? Where it's that we're just not thinking about.
I think, I think you're, you know, there's, there's, you can think of some objectionable uses aside from adult bookstores, but there are, there are some people that have a problem, this was mentioned here, liquor store, you know, that may be impactful and problematic to some people. There's very popular liquor stores nearby that have a lot of traffic. There could be a store that could open, perhaps that would be impactful in some way. Some people may find that morally objectionable, but there's, I think legitimately with some of these businesses, there, there are impacts, right? There are impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, so.
Another meter or two, there could be a dispensary.
Well, that, that, that might be the one that leads to, to top of the line.
Right, yeah.
If, if you want to renege like dispensaries, now would be the time to do it. When.
And I'll throw this out there, I don't know how many times I'll say it, but I, I, I would rather us look to, look to controlling those things like safety, traffic, noise, than, than worrying about the.
Right.
Moral turpitude of a business or whether or not the business nature is objectionable.
Right.
Because I am certain if we go down this, this table, when I find objectionable is going to be different than what councilperson Bruegger finds objectionable and Mayor Southern finds objectionable.
And perhaps reportedly, in 15 years, the moral's dead. And so then you don't, you don't want to run a situation where your code is stubborn fast.
Exactly, yeah.
Otherwise you can't have papers, because, you know, or donut shops, because you don't sell nothing but that.
That's right.
Either donut a day or, you know, smoke a joint a day, one's gonna kill you later, right? It's gonna be that donut. Now, Mike, you might, I think we should ban donut shops, I think donuts are delicious and that's why I was.
It's a record replay.
A record replay, not coming down on donuts, but someone cooked.
But kolaches.
Are you voting, running for reelection, Mark Bruegger, anti-donut? It's not.
So fair enough, all right.
So, well, add that in there, I'm concerned about a gun store in there too.
But.
You know, a gun store next to a daycare.
Well, you're right, but once again, then we run into, there's certain amendment concerns there, right?
I would say a lot.
Then you don't want to try to ban Ohio.
I think where there's like extra regulation in the state of Ohio, probably.
But, but liquor stores are a lot of the extra regulation, I just want to point out cigarette stores as well.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe we should just put the bar on that.
Well, what, what I would tell you, sometimes when, when stores are, when certain uses. Well, what, what I would tell you, sometimes when, when stores are, when certain uses are highly regulated by the state, it handcuffs municipalities' ability to then undercut those state regulations with more specific, because there's a general law in place sort of enacting how they have to be treated. Now certainly, you can have different zoning districts, I'm not saying you don't have to have a gun-stored and commercial or a residential neighborhood. Uh, so there are zoning considerations. But each of those uses is case specific.
We're also statutory.
Well, right, also statutory, ability, right, right.
We have less, right.
That's right.
All I'm saying, that's probably not a great idea to put, put that in there.
But, but again.
Yeah.
Take that into consideration. I think that's gonna go over well.
It's one of those things that if there are specific uses, the group must come to that arrangement.
Okay.
I'm gonna point that out. So I, I am more on the side of economic development and the advantages of various uses that come through various economic development and activities, right? So it doesn't, so, so, but I am just your planner as an example. We try to find solutions to bring your tax dollars in, is, is our purpose here. Alright? So what you folks decide from a use standpoint, you know, may or may not as rest point out affected you in 10 years, five years, 15 years. You know, and you can't necessarily be perceived, so I would go more in the legal argument than anything else.
Yeah.
Alright, we still have 101 pages in this document, so.
Alright.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this, this next one is interesting, I wanna get it right.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So we wanna talk a little bit about.
I don't think this is gonna affect, really, so you don't just keep that.
Want to start with chapter 1258 in the Minerva Park Legacy Plan District. Alright? Now, this is, uh, this is a unique thing that came out of Planning and Zoning Commission and changes to our, our code. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about how to handle the very, what I would call regular plating that took place a long time ago, that basically, um, basically planned out what we call the classic area of the village, the majority of the village. Um, it didn't incorporate, it did not encompass a lot of, um, modern day standards when it comes to uh, lot lines and plots and things like that. Now I'm sure the zoning code, whatever may have existed prior to 1989, probably was okay in regards to our, um, original neighborhood. Uh, Jordan Road came around a little later, and so I'll, I'll get to that part of the history as to why it's, it's still being recommended that it stay within the R3 district. Um, but essentially, the majority of the village has strange strange lot lines, it's not standard, and it's, a lot of people find that to be, you know,
Character.
Yeah, character, charming, original architecture, and it does have it, but it's also from a different standpoint, a bit of a nightmare. So, um, whenever we have, essentially when they adopted the 89 code, they looked at, I think, whoever was on council that time, looked at one section of the village, which was perhaps, I know Jordan Road, which was there at the time. And everything in Jordan Road meets the R3 code they adopted. But the rest of the village doesn't meet the R3 code for a variety of reasons. Um, there was nowhere where we could, where we could find, we didn't have a problem. For example, houses were built either within a foot or two of the lot line, behind the lot line, rear yards were in conformance. The lots themselves, if you read the, the original code, don't meet, don't meet the requirements. So what we did essentially, what we did essentially was go ahead and say, okay, everybody, everybody in this part of the village is essentially in a legal nonconforming lot, which is very problematic. It can affect insurance, it can affect ability, abilities. Everyone who comes in needs some kind of variance. It doesn't matter, like even if they come in for one variance, we end up giving them four or five variants. This is the example being a house across the way there, which was on that strange lot and we wanted to redo it. Because nothing, nothing can conform to code as written, so that is not a good situation being. So, so, and, and we can't obviously go back in time and, and plaid it out properly, right? And, and, and make them an 89 regret the zoning code properly. So, so we were stuck with that situation that was a, a, just bit of a nightmare. So after a bit of discussion, ideas bandied about, we came to the conclusion, um, that we needed to put it in essentially a plan district. And a plan district will allow everything to be in a legal nonconforming status right from the get-go.
Illegal and conforming.
Illegal and conforming, thank you. So, yes. So that solves, that solves our problem that was imposed on us both by wonky plating and that 1989 code all combined together. So this fixes that problem. Um, what it also does, um, is kind of puts us in a situation where people still, when they have major developments, i.e. they need to add on to their house, or they need to do this or that, need to come in and just get a, you know, an okay from a permitting standpoint. Uh, and that's just what we've done, instead of making them jump through hoops and pay money for the variance process, that's, you know, a bit more egregious in what it puts residents through, is take them through a meeting in planning and zoning and get the blessing from planning and zoning, and off they go, then get their permit to do what they need to do. If there is disagreement, obviously, there could be, then they still have an appeals process, that you know, that they're allowed to do. They would go up to council next and then of course there's courses to map for that. Uh, same as variance process, so they still, they still retain their, their legal rights in that regard. You know, we find it to be, I think, you know, there are a couple of council members who are on the diaspora who were part of that process and then speak to it as well, we, we found it to be, uh, a good solution for a problematic situation. And so I'll take it. And Jordan Road, by the way, was left in R3 to answer your question, simply because it meets all the zoning requirements. We didn't wanna, we didn't wanna necessarily put people through, you know, a, a process they didn't need to go through if they already are in conforming in legal lots, right?
No, that's definitely right. Their lots perform with code. So if we were to switch that part, then they, those lots would become legal nonconforming.
Or maybe a worse, got it.
Right.
Okay, so my only concern is like, as a separate district, is it easier to change it to say industrial or something like that? My concern is that somebody's gonna go in there and be like, hey, I'm gonna buy like all these houses and then build warehouses on there because.
There's some where.
Okay.
Right, yeah, it's absolutely not.
Not unless it's a separate district.
No, no, commercial.
That's right.
But like, can you, is it easier to change like one whole district from residential to commercial?
No, it has to go through a whole process here.
Okay.
Have to advertise it, we, we, I think there's, there's specific requirements, you know, for, for advertising and for letting neighbors know and, and you know, it's up to referendum and all kind of.
Right, and, and rezoning is one of the most, uh,
Intensive.
Yeah, intensive and it gives a village council the most power, the most discretionary power to rezone. So anybody that wants to rezone is gonna have to come to you and you are well within your rights to say no.
Okay.
So are there any questions to this? It's a little wonky. Uh, I'll tell you that, uh, the historic Dublin area, kind of right around Bridge Park, all the old houses, it is very much like this in that there's just no code. They were built all along different, you know, different decades and centuries for that matter. Uh, there's no code that fits all of them, so they said they're all, you're all legal and conforming. And if you want to sort of build outside of your existing footprint, then you have to come in and get approval.
Okay.
Um, I see this one line in here that says, this would not include fences, patios, driveways, sheds.
Right.
Is this, um, to satisfy the consistent?
No.
Feedback from a resident?
No, no.
Okay.
This was to, we want to not overburden both ourselves, our planning and zoning commission review, because the history of when I came on board, planning and zoning at the time, unguidedly, was reviewing everyone's stuff. They didn't have the house staff, they weren't doing administratively. And quite funnily, when I sat in, I was a little horrified because there were things that were perfectly legal, it should have been a five minute review, and they were asking people to change designs and things like that. I'm like, bro, this is not, you can't do that, right? It's not, if it meets the, your code, you have to say okay, right? And they weren't doing it. So we, we, essentially through a conversation with council, we changed that process, you know, in order to go ahead and administratively review those items anyways, we went through it, like, things that were, we still had houses and changes still were administratively, but a lot of them ended up in variances regardless. So they were back in front of this group for certain things. Um, you know, and that's how it's kind of evolved over time. But fences and sheds are fairly simple things. People can conform to the, to the code specific to those items without having to go through the process, right, of, of having, of asking a full board for permission on something. You know, because they can meet that, they can, they can put the shed in the middle of the yard, no problem. But lots themselves are nonconforming lots as they exist currently under the code, and they can't, they can't meet it, which is why we are proposing this.
So it's just saying, everything on there is now both legal and conforming because it exists. And then what Jason was just putting up, because the line before it, any new builds, like happened over a couple of times the past few years, mostly on Minerva Lake Road, additions, if I wanted to put a thing off the back of my house. The primary section must come before, and then this would not include fences. If I'm just putting a fence in, if it's code whatever, I don't have to do it because it's legal code to put a fence as long as it's not higher than six feet, not blah, blah, blah. I can just read the code, say, yep, I can just put a fence up. Would this also mean if I just had a fence, no matter what it was, that all of a sudden falls down because it's an old wooden fence and it just gave up the go? Could I replace it with the exact same style even if it's not congruent to modern code, but it was there when this was passed? And that's the question I have.
Uh, if you're talking about a fence that perhaps was eight feet height or something that's out there of current code, the answer is no. Because once, once you have, uh, let's say you had a legal permit to put in whatever fence you want at the time, let's call it any fence for our discussion. And that's perfectly legal. As long as you're maintenanceing your fence over the years, you're fine. You can maintain your legal nonconforming use even, even if the code changed, right? However, once more than 50% of that fence falls in, or you want to replace more than 2% at one time, now you've kicked in, you, you have to come back and make the whole thing conform at that point. So you can't.
Is that 50% is it now, you mean, the week, 50% total replacement or at one time? Can I have a more hundred foot fence in New York City in a year and every 10 years I have a brand new fence?
Can.
That never changes.
You can absolutely do that.
Ooh, shit, but these is.
But people don't let these work that way.
Right.
They're diligent.
So, I know that, um, where the townhouses are, where David lives, that they have a fence, they have eight foot fences over there, one of them is gone or missing.
They're actually 10 feet.
Okay. Anyways, I know they're trying to replace one of them. They're able to replace it because it's less than 50% or?
They actually were able to replace it because it was part of the original development plan for that. That's a whole different thing. And so if we, so if that, when that was approved, uh, that, because that's our 12 district, so that's a new little district. So when that was got approved, the 10 feet were okay. Now, I will tell you in discussions with them, just since we're having this discussion, my advice, there's a huge cost, anything over six feet, like you can get six foot panels and you can get eight foot panels and God help you trying to get bigger and bigger. Now it's a custom job and it's, it's much more expensive every time you level up. They're looking at a way to do it with just six feet. So, and so it conforms anyways, right? That, that's within their right to do so if they vote as their condo association. They don't have to replace the 10 foot fence. Wouldn't be our recommendation anyways.
Just do two six and make it 12.
Yeah, okay.
The deer can still jump over that.
But I think you know where I'm going with the fence thing because we, we keep being, being told, well, it's not in our zoning codes, we're charging, we're making people pay fees, but it's not in the code.
It's, it's in there.
Just make sure it's in there and let's hold.
Yeah. Definitely in the code.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
Just hold it, just.
Thirty-two size one.
Yeah.
Alright, hundred.
Little louder.
Yeah.
Hundred. 1258 is going away, right?
Alright, yes, your opinion.
Because we don't have that district anymore.
Correct.
It's, it, yeah, never existed actually. Again, when they adopt in this code, they adopt a lot of stuff that never applied.
Perfect. Same thing, that's all the same.
Plan commercial.
That's a lot of junk.
Uh, 1259, plan commercial. We never had it, so.
I know, but should we glean some stuff?
That's not one of them.
We're proposing, yeah, so, so we are proposing a change to the map and, 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 um, in a couple of places. So along 161, on this side of, um, oh, that's that ponderosa right there, I see that's on.
Yeah, that's ponderosa, yeah.
We're, we're suggesting we move out of neighborhood commercial, because 2999 building is, uh, in, um, neighborhood commercial, it's already listed building and, you know, it's gonna be there a long time. But any of those lots, including the undeveloped lots, including these houses that eventually can be redeveloped, we're proposing we move all of those into plan commercial districts. So at the time that someone aggregates a couple of properties and wants to come in and do something, i.e. perhaps another office building, perhaps something else, we don't know, uh, we will have that ability to negotiate with them at that time.
So that would stop people from being able to come in, putting in another, this isn't a bad thing, it's just, it's not a bad thing for us. The, um, like the, you know what I'm saying?
Uh, down here, we also proposed putting the, um, store facility.
That's a great, yeah.
Um, in our opinion, that was, it originally is a plan industrial district, we are proposing changing it to plan commercial. Uh, should 50% of that structure burn down or anybody wants to do anything, they would have to come back and redo, redevelop that site under our policy.
Plan commercial, because I know there's on those, the yellow ones north of High Hawthorne. Some of those are just residents, wouldn't that?
Well, they're not residents.
Oh, none of those?
None of those are residents. There, there are houses that are now all in office use.
Gotcha, I, I didn't, maybe at least one of them, someone still has a house there or.
Printing, printing place.
Okay, no, that, that's fine.
Wellness.
Yeah.
And so we would go with the actual language of this district, because it's only 2007.
Right.
So we didn't make any.
Which, what page are you gonna tell me? You're on the map, not the page.
Uh, it's, uh.
Oh, I do have a question, oh, page 88, I miss.
Sure do.
Uh, so, um, keep going. Right there. It's, uh, number two. So, building height of 40 feet, and I only ask that, I only bring that up because we talked about maybe a three story building.
I will just tell you that anything in a plan commercial district, these are just base guidelines. When they come in, this all, this all goes up to one, you can negotiate anything you want, you can tell it's an 80.
Yeah, well, because we'll, we'll develop zoning text for any seismic site.
Okay.
That has.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the developers and us would all go and put a text to it, just like in mine, into the plan residential district. And you adjust that text as necessary.
Okay.
You basically say, uh, this chapter applies except as listed herein.
Okay. Thank you. Alright.
And this just goes through all the content requirements for submission. We did not throw those in anything besides, uh, 1278, just rather than some.
Still good on 1259, 1260, we also don't have that district.
Uh, no, we do not.
Yes, struck 1260 because it doesn't exist.
It's gonna nicely compress things once we're all, once we've finalized the changes for the.
Alright, we're moving on.
Yeah, it's a lot, I mean, it's crazy.
Should have tabs under here.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's, it's good to kind of roll through just to make sure.
Okay.
12.
1267.
1264, we also struck it, restricted industrial district.
Right, don't do that more.
Nope.
Oh, is 1260, do we start 1267, plan industrial park district?
We would leave, we would wanna leave a plan industrial district in just, just because what, what those can accomplish, first, going back to the adult requirements, you do have to show that you have something in place where adults would go, but technically we don't. But you'd have to have the ability to zone something to meet the federal requirements.
Okay.
Okay, number one. Number two, you, you met the data center somehow, right? And you wanna throw it into a plan industrial, you don't know what's coming down the pipe with intel, there could be any number of things. They may buy that up and put a giant, you know, five story high, uh, data center.
Okay.
I don't know.
Right, right.
Okay.
So just, just, just as examples, there's a lot in the world that's happening right up there. You know, we wanna keep something from the industrial side there so that you can jump to it. And maybe, maybe we're all gone from that point, but 20 years down the road.
It's more so that we can quickly rezone an area to that rather than start from scratch.
Potentially, right, potentially.
And, and again, it's because it's a plan district, you already, you have that flexibility anyway, so it doesn't hurt to keep this here somewhere in place for it.
Okay, okay. Alright, next one's gone.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're up to 1272? Page 123?
Yes. These are just general, yeah, all the standards.
This is where you come in, Jason?
No, I don't have any questions here. I still have my list of questions. We're not there. No, we're good. We're good.
Uh, okay, so.
Yeah, we specifically called out, uh, driveways, driveway abrams.
Okay, oh, there we are, require permit.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I needed to see. I guess.
They have always, they have always been required. Certain residents don't think they've always been required, despite the fact that they have.
They have. So we are putting in.
What pages are they?
I have that.
That's on page 124.
Wow, I think I have really jumped ahead. I wanna play on the bathroom floor.
No, I'm just.
Oh, okay, wow, I thought it just.
Okay, what's in there?
The driveway. The driveway permits are required.
Permits are required for driveways.
Is that one in thirty-six inch font too? Yeah, it's highlighted.
All aprons require permits, driveways require permit, when being newly constructed or rebuilt, and when defined rebuilt. Uh, to be defined as tearing up the driveway material down to the base.
Now, what about, do we, do we need anything in there about the right of way part of it or?
We, um, the right of way.
Right. But I feel like it wasn't. I, I vaguely remember something about a difference between if the driveway is torn up and the right of way versus.
So aprons as defined is that piece that's in the right of way, if these are two driveway, that's in our ground regardless.
Which we require a permit for all of them.
Right, doesn't matter. So what we're saying here is no matter what, driveway apron, permit. So it's, it's laid out.
Okay.
Even if someone wants to argue other places, right there.
Okay, so it says all aprons require and driveways require, it's two separate.
And if contractors don't have an issue, like one of my best friends is in our office. Like there, I've seen her, once, I see her more there, once a week she's in there getting permits for driveways.
We're good, we're good.
Alright, uh, no other questions then? We will continue our journey.
I mean, you guys have a couple of comments in here, I assume you guys have had those discussions.
You gotta remember this actually.
Yes.
You gotta remember, they went through this, uh, the old community building and then they took it to planning and zoning. This is their third or fourth time going through this now.
Oh, yeah.
Right, four.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm good. Okay, one twenty-six is scratched, one twenty-seven is most of it. I mean, I didn't have any questions.
Was this for Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, it was, um.
Twelve seven, it's twelve seven.
No, it's good, let's meet, yeah, it's all.
We have a few things the engineers need to clean up.
We moved the home occupation thing.
What, sorry?
He removed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, home occupation, yeah, it's, it's below this. Those notes are for Mike. I, I think he may have not caught them in his revision picture.
We'll have Mike just re-review it, make sure he answers to it. Some stuff is tactical nature, we'll have it cleaned up, and we'll re-review all of this. So I'll move on here. Yeah, so here on twelve seventy-two, we removed home occupations. It got moved down, this is to its own section. Cause there's a lot of mishaps that happened in this section. We wanted to have to clean that up, make it easier to read.
Um, I highlighted this, I think, maybe? Letter B up there.
B.
Yeah, I think I see it. Yep, nope, two five, two five, one, uh, right there, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm only highlighting this, I mean, uh, I just am bringing it up one more time, within the M I section, most people have their garbage cans on the side of the house. And we either need to enforce it, or we need to change the rules.
Right, don't disagree with you. So, uh. Let's talk to you about for a minute. So our difficulty is, we have people that are, right, so from an administrator standpoint. If they, when we go yelling, we send them a letter, go through that whole process. Once they move it. Then it's over, right? Our enforcement action is over. So then, once they leave it out again, annoy everyone. We have to go back and do the same thing, it's the same game. So what we may want to do, quite frankly, is something similar to what we do with Grex. It's where we have our chronic abusers, they just start getting some type of fine, right? Where we have to go move for them and then there's a twenty-five dollar fine or something like that. Money can make people start to do things quicker. Now, I just bring that up, there's a number of creative ways to enforce, but that reason that it's a cat and mouse game is because there's no teeth in the action, right? Cause once we move it, it's over.
I mean, I can drive by, I mean, I drive through there every day, people's trash cans on the side of their house all the time. It's not a.
And we do, we get those complaints, like there's bugs flying around, there's this, there's that because of how.
I mean, they're just, they're just on the outside of their, their, um, garage right there.
Under, under the M I code, under the text, uh, of that, it allows for them to be on the side of the house if there's a fence in front of them. Some people have taken advantage of that and done that. Now, we can, we can continue to go after people, right? But again, we, we're, we're most of the field of creative, because I, I, it, it, we're, it's a sticking point in that. We get, we got most of people to do it. We've got a few that continue to not do it or to play the game, right, at the end of the day.
Yeah, we have some game players.
Uh.
And it's very problematic from enforcement standpoint because we have to enforce other things and then this is constantly.
It's every Sunday, it's, it's every Tuesday.
Well, it's not even, I'm not even talking about people leaving their cans on the street.
Just where they're.
Where they sit.
They're just on the side. I mean, that's where they live.
But then, once they, once they put a fence up, which they have a right to do, then that disappears, that problem disappears.
Right.
Right. But, but in, from, from our code standpoint, but not necessarily from the function of the smell and stuff like that. Cause I know people have a porch and there's a trash can right there by the, by the porch, right?
Fence doesn't fix that.
Right.
But they're allowed to do it.
Right. So just keep that in mind, and, and, you know, it's not, they don't have three car garage for the most part, and so they don't have an extra spot. People have two cars trying to put in, so there's all kinds of functional issues we're dealing with.
I understand that. I want us to have the discussion on what, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna enforce it or are we not gonna enforce it? We're gonna let it?
First, for clarity, you're not asking, you're not suggesting that this comment B here is insufficient. You're just saying, you're asking, do we want to, are we ready to add teeth?
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna leave it in here, the teeth need to be there, otherwise, let's just get, get rid of it.
I believe it should be in there, and I think we can, we can work on adding teeth. My question is, is this where we, is, is the code rewrite where we delineate consequences and process? Or is that in a separate order?
If we want to change.
You could do it, I mean, you could, you could do it here. You could have a subsection that says, sort of outlines our letter process, our letter.
A, a simple first, first notice, you, you get a letter. Any, anytime it is witnessed in non-compliance, their, you know, next offense is. We roll it back for you and we send you bill for twenty-five bucks and it escalates.
Right.
You know, to a.
Of course, our problem is, am I right? But we, we're saying roll it back, but I think our problem is. We don't need to roll it anywhere. They roll it right to the side of their house. There's no need to roll it. It's just there.
Well, the, the side of the house is, well, if it's there and visible, I mean, they'll quickly rack up a, a bill because on day one.
Sure, yeah.
Day one, we mail you a letter, right? We give it three days for mail to process. And then on day four, we send them a bill. And then we give it three days for the mail to process, and on day, now we're up to day seven, we send them a bigger bill.
You're worth the same though, cause of twenty-five dollars for a fence, you get to the price of just buying that six foot piece of fence and installing it. Now, that will change, that will solve the problem of people seeing it from the road, but I think. Jason was saying it's also a problem, just like, okay, they have that little fence there, but it's still right next to my porch, cause my porch is six feet away from the side of their house.
I mean.
But that permitted by.
And when, yeah, so that's the best problem.
Unfortunately, which is fine, I don't, that's not the bigger deal to me.
We could do, we, we can jump.
Right, I didn't, I didn't know if you were trying to get that.
In jumping on, in jumping on the fee, right, we could encourage, say, hey, dummy. You've got five hundred dollars in fees, but guess what? You go put a fence up here in, under thirty days with the money, we'll waive that fee. With a little carrot stick action.
I will, I will also say that in here.
I like that.
I could put a one foot fence up and it meets this requirement.
Yeah.
There's nothing.
No, 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 it doesn't, no, 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 it, uh, hold on.
Oh, it says must conceal. It says must conceal, you're right. So it just has to be tall enough to.
It's specific and it's even more written out. We can, we can merge the two areas because it's even more clearly written out in the M I division of what you're allowed to put up specifically. It is a six foot fence or whatever, so far wide, I think. But either way, we can, we can merge those two and make sure they're.
I don't know if we can put a fee or anything in our code because would a fee changes because, like in twenty years.
Right, it changed. We, we reference it. I like anything, we, we reference it back to the fee schedule.
Right. And just say first offense.
So they'll say a fee as, as listed in the fee schedule or determined by now.
Listen, if we do that for this, can we do it for everything else too? What kind of?
We, we, we have that, we have it there for the mowing fees, I believe are in there as an example, right? So those are, those are listed out, I think, in the fee schedule.
But I think, I think to her point, we have some consistent rule breakers with the mowing that we haven't been able to put enough teeth into.
We certainly have.
So can we put more or, or? Re, re.
We certainly do. We, we have a situation now, we have people that, uh, we, we, um, have sent a bill, and if they don't pay the bill at a certain time, then we will leave in the property.
I think we also changed it from seven days to three, if I'm not mistaken.
We did, we did, that, it's always been consistent in code as to what the period of time that we issue it out. And then at that time, if they don't, if they choose not to do it, they can send a mower out anytime of the year, once one notice is given.
Yeah.
So that's, that's how we, that's how our code is written. But we, from a policy standpoint, I think, and, and what got eighty percent of people to do it, or eighty-five percent or whatever, was simply more of a courtesy notice to say, hey, mow your grass. It wasn't the enforcement letter. The enforcement letter can be issued out once a year, and once that's done, we don't have to tell them the next time. They let their grass be twelve inches high, well, alright, as an example, seven to eight inches, and they, they get no loan. So there's no name after the first letter.
Regardless, they are not happy.
Alright, cool, that was it then.
Okay, um, okay. No other questions on this section? We didn't propose any changes?
Well, just, uh, look, that, no, go back up, go the other way.
And what corrective action?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, isn't that what we were just talking about?
It is.
So we need to revise this a little bit.
Yes, to figure out.
Yeah.
Page one twenty-nine, yeah. So what we were just talking about just needs to be rewritten in here.
Okay.
To be more what we've just discussed.
Yep.
Some of this we've moved. Public nuisance got moved to fourteen, right?
Which one?
Did public nuisance get moved to fourteen?
Uh.
Or taken out completely?
Well, so, so, but we, we have a section, public nuisance got moved, if I'm not mistaken, was that with police code, right?
Yes.
We have, we have, we have nuisance code that's in maintenance code, right? So that's abating, abating a property nuisance. It's different than a noise nuisance, right, right? So a noise nuisance is handled in a police code.
Right.
Is that what this one was, twelve seventy-two, was it noise?
Uh.
It's, it's like noise, smoke, dust, it's all things that fall in or hay.
Right, right, right.
Gotcha.
I think I'm going back a little bit, back to C on one twenty-eight.
Page one twenty-eight.
Page one twenty-eight, C, motorhomes, trailers, boats and other non-private flash interview schools shall as nearly as practicable. Be concealed from public view. And does that mean I can put a boat on the apron of my driveway and say, well, there's a little bit of a wall here and there's some trees. And that's how much I can conceal it, so I'm doing my best.
I think we allow people, if I recall this correctly, uh, we have, we allow people to park it if they can on the side or rear of their house. Uh, they have to have, they have to meet certain criteria. You're allowed to have it at the front of your house for a limited amount of time. I can't remember if it was seventy-two hours or what it was, I think it was. Yeah, and so that way they can load, unload, you know, and then they either have to take it off-site, or again, if their house allows it, or some properties do, they can move around.
My question is then, are we setting up conflicting things? Cause if I come in and say, no, C says as nearly as practicable be concealed from you. This is concealed as I can get it on my property, that counts.
If, if they get it around to the side of the house, and it's, you know, if they've met the, the code, it's, it nearly is concealed from the view. It's getting around the side of the house, meeting that part of the code, right, or the rear. So I don't have any issue with that. You know, because we've already, we've already established that, what we're requiring where they, with their R V or their trailer or anything like that.
Where, where does that specify? I mean, and that's what I'm saying, is that there's two different place, cause I just read this, I don't know about the side of the house thing. And I say, well, this says this, what do you mean I have to do side or back? Cause it doesn't say it here. And then if we have a different code that says something different in a different spot, that's what's causing frustration for people.
Um, just to clarify real quick, I know we said seventy-two hours for them to be out front. Can we change that, give them a little bit more time? Um, and the reason, there's a reason why on that.
Hold on, hold on.
Yes, we can, is the quickest. You could, you could propose a change, we can debate it. That is certainly something that's changeable.
Right, it is changeable. Yeah, I will point out that, as you know, a lot of time spent on that section of the code in planning and zoning.
I know.
Alive, so.
Well, I'm the one who said three days and I, this should be longer.
Yeah, I'll have to come, I'll hunt that one on. It, it's in there.
I'll know that people would be struck if it's conflicting, we'll find where it is.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that's my, now my job, I would rather just strike it and say, if you have a boat, put it in your driveway, that's great, yay you. It's gonna cost you a lot of money and you're gonna be happy when you sell it, but.
So. Just playing devil's advocate here. So if I have a R V, I can, not an R V, ATV, I can have it up to my driveway.
I don't know if that section of code is, it's not, it's not clear in my head. I think anything that is specific to recreational vehicle, I think an ATV is a recreational vehicle. It's something that you cannot keep in your driveway for longer than, we would interpret it, if I remember in the code right, that we did, P and Z. Seventy-two hours you can have it there. It's kind of silly because it's meant for R Vs and, we, we had a lot of catch-all for recreational vehicles.
Okay.
An ATV is not your standard, street legal vehicle.
Right, or golf cart or?
Yeah.
Golf carts would be street legal, so we, the.
So inside, right, inside is going to be private garage.
But, but for recreational vehicles, no, they have to keep it in the garage, which is easy for an ATV, but frankly. Um, it's the R V that doesn't fit in the garage.
It just seems like all that would fall under this one section.
Sure, that's fair. We'll make sure it's squared up.
Yeah, we, we have a section specific to this, that's why I'm, I, I just don't remember. We'll come across.
That's fine, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, are you all good with striking the entire heliport section?
Oh.
But, come on, what is?
No, we'll just take it out.
But we were gonna replace them after, because after doing all this, because.
Wait, where is it? My laptop.
Where is that?
Can you, can you just go over that? I'm just, for edification purposes, can you just, I just need a good laugh.
You just need the heliport?
Yeah.
It's not, we can keep it there, you never know.
No, I just, can you just read it for me? Like, I, I don't, I can't see it, where is it?
Um, heliports, due to the rapid development of, of, page one thirty-four. Rapid development of and the need for helicopter services, it is deemed appropriate that such usage require a special permit as required by this chapter.
So what you're saying is I could have a helicopter?
You could.
You could come in and get, uh.
A helicopter permit.
Well, let me ask this. If, if next year, um.
Leonid wish, no, she's tried.
A helicopter for, is that different?
Yes, and those are emergency vehicles, military vehicles, med flight, the police, totally outside, this is privately.
Gotcha, okay.
This is having a little private airfield backyard, so you can land your helicopter. I mean, if you could do that, as much as I love Nerville Park, probably someplace.
We can strike that, I'm okay with.
On our lots.
I'm okay with striking that.
How am I gonna get out of the traffic?
Dish antennas, is there, are there any of those, the big ones?
There are many, there are a couple of big ones, do you have any left?
Are there any like the real ones?
The big, the big eight foot satellite, they are there on.
All it has is, uh, it has roof or wall mounted satellites. A small provision for it.
What about like, did you, I saw the drone situation.
I didn't think we were, I didn't think we were allowed to regulate satellite dishes.
We can tell them where they can stick it.
Yeah.
That's nice.
Well, since a front yard versus rear yard, right, side yard, where that goes. So, not to be losing, but, but the, but the same, the same issue is also one problem with the big dishes that people will let them fall and miss repair.
Yeah, I get the big ones, right.
But that can happen with the smaller ones too.
Sure.
So, there's people. Yeah, I would rather.
Bullets, grounded, that's.
Yeah.
Eric, going back to that, um, R V parked on the driveway, can we give them like seven days instead of three? I thought it only need three days.
This room is on the side, remember there was a large discussion with P and Z, so just keep that in mind, you guys go back, we'll, we'll talk about that in time.
Yeah, it was.
Cause I'm not into it, you're gonna need like more three days. If you go to your place to pick it up, take it home, that's a day.
I was thinking a day to fill it up with food, a day to clean it, and a day to get your stuff and get on out of the road, but that's not the case. If you're piling it out of, say, stores and you're about to go camping for the spring, it's gonna take a day to get back home. Day to get it de-iced or whatever, run your water through it, grocery shopping, clean it, and then the fifth day, you can probably get your stuff and get ready to go.
That's too much work.
That's a lot of work, I know. It is a lot. Yeah, but, yeah, but I'm just saying, like, it might take longer than three days for them to get situated to go out on the back on the road. That's the legit thing. But usually it's.
We're scrolling, you have any questions?
Oh, I think my next one was one forty-four, I may want, oh no, one forty-seven.
Okay.
I think it had to do with weeds. I, my question, my note says weeds, question mark.
Weeds are handled under six sixty-five.
Yeah, we have.
Noxious weeds are handled there from enforcement standpoint.
Yep.
If that's true.
Oh, letter D is the one I highlighted. All landscaping material must be installed in a sound working like. Uh, so, this also came up with the same resident with the lawn, who also has an extensive amount of weeds. And so how do we put teeth around?
That's in six sixty-five.
Yeah, so we have a rule code.
We have a code to handle that. This also, I will point out that that landscaping, this is about development and things of that nature. Um, when we talk about compliance, permanent landscape underwires, when I'm building a building, new site, essentially, this is not, this is not something. You're a liar, a small bed, all of this, this code is specific to development.
When you're building, okay, thank you.
But yes, we do have a provision in the criminal code that sends the neighbors court for.
Yeah, well, we can, yeah, we, if it, if a landscaping bed turned into grass, now we enforce it as that, right, and it would go.
And it's the one that you and I have stopped multiple times.
Right, we've done that in other cities, so.
I'll be, I'll tell you, there's a couple in MI section, but now we're getting that.
Right, well, essentially, and and I I talked to, I talked to John about a couple of those, they went around. Anything that's basically turned into grass, it needs to be treated as such and you just, you just mow it at that point, right? And if they don't mow it, we mow it. So, you know, you let it go to that point and you you have to control it under six inches, like everything else.
Um, okay, next one is one.
Wait, hold on, I have one question. Okay, so you know how there's a fag with turning lawns into like native gardens and things like that? Is there provisions for that in the code just of turning lawns as that is a trend?
So, yes, okay, so, a couple things on that. Um, people can do neat things now. In fact, next to my brother's house, a gentleman there, he pretty much turned his into clover metal, right? But he keeps it under six inches. It's very nice, actually, it distracts the bees and everything. So you have the ability to grow, we don't require grass, by the way. You can do any type of ground cover that is not a noxious weed and be legal, okay? Now, when you're talking about transformation, uh, you know, this is something this body needs to consider, cause I can tell you, it becomes a hot mess if somebody turns their front yard into metal. If the backyard, cause I've been in municipalities where they have land that allowed for this and it was experimented and that was the end. The backyard is a different story, where it's out of, not on the main street, and so there might be the ability to go ahead and regulate turning it. Cause right now we have forests, but people can let their ground go to forest, you know, there's a transformation period for that, right? And I don't think that's such a, a big deal, but what happens is if you, you know, you allow people to go into the neighborhood, this, people take advantage of that code and just turns it into a hot mess and you've got noxious weeds mixed in with native grasses and it's, it's a disaster. Right, and then, and then you're like, you gotta get rid of those noxious weeds, well, how do I do that? Bush log sounds good, right, because that's what they let it get to. Essentially, the same thing with the landscaping beds that are allowed to go, go to pot. I mean, that's what you run into from an enforcement standpoint. In theory, it's a great idea. Love the idea of meadows and things that support the pollinators. In practice, if you can do that, you can do that on a level that meets the code where you're under six inches, you might be able to consider something for rear yard, but you're still gonna listen to the neighbors because if they let it go, they don't do anything to maintenance it, you still have to maintenance meadow areas to some degree regardless, right? You still have to maintain them in a different way. People don't wanna do that, they just want a non-maintenance area, which is impractical. You have to maintenance something. There's work that goes into it one way or the other.
It's called a condo.
Also correct, yeah. So, but, you know, this.
So if a homeowner approaches you and says, this is what I'm trying to do, cause it's better for the environment, like, will you just say, hey, we can't do this here, their code doesn't allow it, or will you say, hey, like, add some more flower beds or something?
They could do, yeah, they could do, they could do things.
What's the answer? Yeah.
They could do things that, if they wanna turn their front yard into a giant ma, a giant, uh, essentially landscaping bed garden, they can do that, but it requires maintenance. People try to do things that don't require maintenance and it gets them drawn from enforcement, but the answer is yes.
Okay, that's good. And it's above six inches is what, you know, maybe?
If they, yeah, so if I want a bunch of rose bushes, as an example, or a bunch of flowering plants, as long as I'm maintaining the beds and not allowing.
So what you're saying is like, instead of, I, you have multiple beds and with a path.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep, it's fine.
Fine. Make sure you go to that, that's.
They can do it, they just.
Architectural Digest said that's a thing.
You do it. Alright.
One fifty-one.
That's my next question.
Our owner appeals embarrassed, is anything you want?
No.
Okay, so, changes, a couple things suggested here. There any questions, have to answer those?
Okay, we've had the discussion around trees once already.
Right.
And I want to point out at one fifty-one, number five, whoever removes damages or causes to be removed or damaged, shall be required to replace the tree at his or her own expense.
Public tree.
Yeah, that's the tree, the ones on the tree lawn, right?
Right. The key in that is whoever removes damage or causes to be removed. Now, when they knock me naturally, it's not the fault.
Okay. So if they back up and hit it, they've caused it.
Someone's responsible for the tree.
Yeah.
Right.
So, some, some, some landlords have come to us and said, hey, I wanna go ahead and add a tree, and I was like, Danny, and we took, I've sent several maps out, you know, for our, that apple native species that was approved by, plant zone in this body, it's part of the MI plant. So, and people are welcome to plant those. Right now, that's where we have to go as to what is a street tree in the, in the new section. So, we have a list of them.
But if it just dies itself or the homeowner is not responsible?
That's our responsibility at that point to replace.
Okay.
I think with this, the number, the section three, I mean, I think, do we put teeth around that too? We've had that discussion a little bit too.
Right, so here's, here's my professional advice on this, in whatever the municipality does, we don't put a pruning nine-four stick or anything in the hands of a homeowner. They don't know what they're doing. They will just kill the tree and then you're back to making them replace a tree. So what I would suggest.
With a small tree, that needs more pruning anyway.
Right, right, so, what I'm suggesting is, you value your trees and urban parks without trees, in my opinion. You have to, you have to eventually get out there and you have to prune them up a little bit and do, use, typically people have trained staff, you know, it's not part of training, but you have an arborist train the staff and they go out and prune the tree without killing it, right? Cause we tell people that they're gonna get out there all pissed and they hack away at the tree or they use a tool that they don't, they just don't know what they're doing. So they end up damaging the tree worse than if we just left it alone. So.
Well, we have, just so the rest of council knows, we did ask our landscaping company to give us an estimate, a price on doing this for us and their recommendation, they're gonna give us a price, but they basically said, this is probably not an every-year thing, this is an every-two-or-three-year type project where we would just go through and charge you a set fee or a flat fee for doing the whole neighborhood. So we have done that, but I, just cause it's in, I wanted to bring it up, but just for sure we.
We have, so you know that that code exists under, again, the same one as the grass code. We can, we can, if we could, feel, so choose to enforce it upon people to trim their trees above an eight-foot level. It's just not something municipalities do anymore.
Sure.
Right?
And I do think we're coming around the time that organs are so, went off to do the sidewalks.
Oh, we fixed that one.
Right, do the sidewalks, you mean what?
Yeah.
You have to tell people to live.
So, we faced with them, you know, and we just have to, we, we wrote the code for it, so we're gonna have to go back there, read it and see exactly what we have to do, notices are gonna have to go up, cause yes, there's quite a few.
Well, sidewalks are cracking and uneven.
There's heat, normal things, yeah.
Yeah.
Huge.
And most of that.
We're small enough, we can deal with it. We're not, you know, you're up in Columbus and nice little neighborhood.
Most of that.
Sidewalks are.
Right, most of that is fairly cheap adjustment in which, in one of the countries, you're gonna come out and they're just readjust the block and it's not, it's not.
We paid like three hundred dollars for that upfront, when we had it done a couple years ago. I just paid four hundred dollars.
Well, you got, you got.
From A one.
Well, you must have had a lot of work.
Yeah, we did like three hundred dollars.
You gotta be, but yeah, single, a single block is not gonna.
Yeah.
Um, okay. My next question is one fifty-four. I think I have two. Uh, okay, so letter A right there at the top, do we have a central business district? Don't we get rid of that or not?
I, I would say that our central business district is on Cleveland Avenue, but we can, we can more properly define that, cause it says, their code for eighteen.
Yes, we'll just need to figure out what that, if that's the.
Yeah, all those numbers, all those R one, R two, we kind of have redone all those, so I think that just needs some.
Adjustment, yeah.
Language adjustment. And then the other one was, the design, this, no sign shall have more than three colors, I mean, I mean, who does three colors nowadays? It's not like you pay per color now.
Well, what we're, what we're talking about is the, um, specifically the sign font and just to keep things straight in there, typically it's three colors plus black and white, right? And so then the, the emblem though.
That's all four colors, CMYK.
Right.
So.
The emblem is to be whatever their, whatever their copyrighted trademark emblem can be, right? And so that gets put into the sign, that's totally different from the, the, the colors and the actual font of the sign.
Is there a reason we have no sign shall have more than three colors? Jason pulled it up, I'm like, so I can't put a rainbow on my sign, is that so?
No, you can put a rainbow, that's your, that's your logo.
Yeah, but like even if it's not my rainbow, it's my logo that I have registered, I just wanna.
Officially, no, I mean, look, this was code that, that was common amongst municipalities.
I guess what we're saying is we wanna just kill that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I just don't see the point anymore. But are we talking, is this specific to, like, marquee signs? Is this, like, what are we?
So.
Yeah, cause I could, I could see the big sign on top that's lit up, maybe, but.
Yeah, this, my understanding, like, this is recent, this is not that old. This is something that was a long time that this was.
This is, this is, this is, this is back to, this is back to any time.
This is any time.
This is any time code, this is, this is, if you, I'll just tell you that this language is common amongst municipalities.
What if we just do the signage code, because we just did that whole white wall and we talked about.
We'll get to that, but you.
Okay, we're on there.
That was a different part of the call.
Okay, is this re, like, contradictory though?
No, this is for the, this is for the signs that are like wall signs or monument sign, typically speaking, outside, it's outside.
So not business sign?
Window signs, for the businesses, but they're, the, we, we focused on window signs, those specifically. But we, we can get to those, this I'm here, so, covered signs then differentiate into wall signs, you know, there's specifics for that. Ground signs, specifics for that, okay? Uh, window signs, which we focused on over in P and Z, when it was changed.
Oh, yeah.
Roof signs, protecting sign, projecting sign, which come out. Signs are always a problem, and you see, this, this part was passed in twenty nineteen, so this is fairly recent, some of what we did. The language, the language up above concerning the three colors and blah, 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 that's been old, common language amongst sign code for a long time. I mean, I've counted that, animals, every municipality, I mean, I think you have two.
What's your law?
Right.
One color.
Yeah.
What is your?
No law.
I'm telling the law. They, they have specific districts to how, I mean, the look and feel, the brick, I mean, a sign can't have any logos, you can, you can dig out people's logos, there've been a lot of lawsuits on that, but I think.
Yeah, you can't.
You can do that now, so you tell them no logos, um, so all that stuff down there.
So then letter F is also gonna be around, is this more about our commercial spaces, prohibited signs and devices?
This is all, this is all commercial.
So you can't hang a banner outside?
You can't have a park sign?
If I'm not mistaken, we talked about some temporary.
We do, we have a.
Signage, and that was, that was in place of, cause sometimes it takes time to fabricate signs, some businesses need to put, some time to put up a sign, so they get, they get a banner put over while they're waiting on the fabrication to finish up.
Is there a certain amount of time that we allow for that, as I think there's a temporary signage that would, you know?
Yeah, I think I do, we did limit a certain amount of time on that.
One thing, if someone, if someone's putting up a now hiring banner or something like that, like that's, we're saying no, is that what this is saying here?
Um, beat that question.
If, like, now hiring or clearance sale.
No, that's different.
That's not this section here, that's.
No, no, this is, this is dealing with these, these bigger, like, a lot of this deals with the big permanent signs. This is a permanent sign.
Temporary sign is at the bottom of one fifty-eight, that just requires a request to, it limits it by square footage, it requires a request to plan inside, so they come in and say.
This isn't even permanent sign, cause that's twelve eighty, so what is this? This is general requirements.
So what you're saying, that, that to me says that, you know, how many, you know, depends, which, uh, wacky inflatable apartment, that's not.
Yeah, any code that, that people put up the crazy way of being armed guy.
Yeah.
I think we, we need to make sure we get crazy way of being armed guys, if they're possible. Do you, do you want those in there? Because I think.
Yeah, put that in there, wacky inflatable, like, I don't know, inflatable.
They can't, or?
No, I don't want that, do you want that?
I don't care.
Literally, anything that looks like fun, I don't want.
You don't want fun?
I don't want, I don't think that, I don't want that.
So, so under, under F, we don't allow these spindles, mini sign banners, portable signs, mobile fireworks, flashy and blinking signs. Signs that we do, we require similar signs, vice prohibited. Do you want, the license sign, that'd be great, but, they'll do them.
So here's just, this is a.
One word apart, so, you say, not bigger than twenty-five.
You guys know, like, the person that had the tent up, that was like right in front of that? Yeah, yeah. Okay, do you kind of, it's like, do you have any idea what I'm talking about?
No, yeah, there were something like iPads or something.
Somebody said that it was a government, this is what I was told, it was a government-type event, um, therefore we could not tell them that they could not be there. Do you know, I'll tie it up.
I saw the tent.
Maybe ten, I suppose.
It was there for, for, quite a few days here, we.
I'm giving a thank you, I don't know.
I just didn't know that was something that they're allowed, I mean, do we have any different requirements for doing that, because still we don't.
Yeah, we talked about, we, 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 we. Some merger.
Cause that was, I mean, we actually had a parking lot wired up.
What's hap, what's happening? What are we discussing?
Oh, the tent, the.
The tents, what's hap, what's happening?
There was a guy, there was a tent outside on Cleveland Avenue, set up, that was selling like iPads or MacBooks.
There was a program that was, they were giving those out to, you know, low income folks.
Okay.
Is what that was. And so, it was, it was, it was a program, federal money pays for it, so they give out the phones to people, they come sign up.
And so they, I guess the question was, were they allowed to do that without?
Did they get permission from Yasmin? Is it because of where they were sitting? Is it something?
He's out, he's out of the way, where he's sitting, he's sitting on Yasmin's property, so I'm assuming Yasmin had no issue with it because he's pretty protective of his community that happens on his lot, so, you know, that's, I think, within his permission to do that. If we want.
But wouldn't that count as a temporary sign?
Well, the, 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 I mean, I think it's more we're concerned with a temporary vendor, is where mine, I come in, and so if there's an issue with a temporary vendor, pop up, you know, we, we kind of control for food trucks to some degree. It's a special permit right now, you know, internally, if we wanna do that, if we, if you want to simply, I mean, I would say, if it's something you wanna enforce an action on, you know, we would have to spell out how we would allow for a temporary vendor if it was to be allowed. I see, I see positives in allowing temporary vendors under, under certain conditions, but you gotta be careful because if you, you know, you could have a bunch of them outside.
I think that was the question, is this a Yasmin thing, is it something that, this week it's this person, next week it's somebody else, because she's.
If it's, if it's Yasmin market and they've got their own tent, they're on their own property and they're, they're simply, it's simply like a temporary sale or something they're doing, it's promotional, I, I think that's a rare here, and if you guys have something against it, then we need to, to consider.
For me, I think it's more about next week, are, is there gonna be another temporary thing parked down?
Right, and that's, that's a fair, that's a fair point, it's, you know, it's something that needs to be regular, you don't wanna see that on a regular basis. It's like Raj said, right, the guy wants to put up something and he's promoting something from the business, maybe it's okay to do it a couple times a year just not to exceed three or four or five days or something like that, right? I mean, just something that allows the business owner in that situation to do it, right? To give him flexibility, I mean, it's up to you, so.
I was just curious if it was something that, if we even knew what, for sure they were, could be another.
Yeah, it was, it was, we went up there and looked at it, it was, he was, he was doing some, some giveaway for low income folks, so, I mean, they sign up and they get a phone, so it was something low. I'm sure there's reimbursement money from someone for doing that stuff, so.
If you go back up to one fifty-seven, letter E, real quick. Uh, C, C, C and C B. Uh, C, C, C and C B districts. Are those still or do we need to change that?
The, uh, yeah, well, those are gone. So we 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 eliminated those districts.
Are prohibited.
Yes.
So.
Prohibited.
Do we need to update it to a different district or get rid of it altogether or?
Well, you need to say it's you don't eliminate it because then projecting signs would be allowed.
Okay, so then we need to say we're accepting.
Accepting the districts we want them.
Yeah.
Right, so maybe we would eliminate, yeah, we could. We would eliminate everything below that. You know, unless there's a reason you would want these somewhere else.
Right.
I don't know why it would. You don't have.
I mean, I would say.
But yeah.
Right, so we just want to prohibit projecting signs.
Right.
Okay.
Projecting signs are prohibited. So I'll strike comma, except in and wanting to.
Okay. All like it's strict.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, that's my last question.
Okay, last question for her?
No, on this in chapter 12.
So what did we just do with projecting signs?
Private event.
Pardon?
Private event.
Yeah, because it was only except in the two districts and they are already eliminated. So you prohibited them effectively.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll double check. I don't have any other questions.
Or do we want to let them be in what those districts are now called now?
Well, they may not even they may have we may not have had a name change. It might have been districts that didn't exist.
Oh.
Yeah, we got someone.
See if we had one that didn't exist, yeah.
Seventy two hours.
Oh, sorry, I have something highlighted on page 166 where we have a question mark.
That was.
Two hours.
Okay, that's cool. Okay, hold on one sec. So we're good with abandoned signs. We have a lot of street parking at the bottom of 161.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Uh huh.
Which, as we noted earlier, we think will bring back a couple of suggestions on changing around the parking requirement for the districts.
Question. Can't have a question mark in that. We got to say what it is.
Parking, wheel stops, servicing and maintenance. These are all landing. Okay.
What's the question?
Letter B.
Oh, yeah, this is recreation.
But what page are you on again?
Uh, 166. Letter B, it says no longer than X and question mark or 72 question mark. I feel like we have to say we're.
That was.
This is where we're at.
Yeah, this is when we went back and we were talking about how many days.
This is the number of days. Okay.
Hours. We didn't know the time when we talked about.
Commercial vehicles. Okay.
So.
So right now.
This is saying 72 hours.
Yeah. Alright, can I get it to say 72 because I have it in X.
So this is where we discuss and what that is. Can we just meet in the middle and say four days?
I'll give him virus sticks.
Are we changing commercial and recreational or we just did one or the other?
They're handled separately.
Yes, they're they're separate. I see one in D and one further down.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
I don't care. I'm just.
What about their sick?
We do have two. We do have two different things here. So let's let's make sure.
Yeah, because they took that out.
So recreational vehicles are below. Commercial vehicles are a different thing. This came off this year with people with.
Seven.
Right.
Right.
Work vehicles essentially.
Seventy two is fine.
That's not what?
Yeah, so 72 was meant to give him over the weekend for the week as a holiday day. Yeah, that's right. So you're going to 72 in a.
Commercial, yeah.
Takes for work, yeah.
Yeah, but you can't. So what is.
But if they go on vacation for a week, they're going to move it somewhere else. Up below, so you have to do.
Well, this is, I think we went over this last time. If I work for a company that has me driving a company van home. And it's just where I drive every day.
Right.
Is my Mr. 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 No.
Right.
Van, the company lets me drive and wants me to park at my house every day.
So here it up above, commercial vehicle means any vehicle used or designed to be used for business or purposes. Which vehicle infringes on the residential character of a district, including but not limited to it. Perhaps this might be an example where I would strike it. If this is what we list, a bus, a cement truck, commercial tree trimming. So it's not a truck that's wrapped with.
It's it's not my cable, my spectrum cables truck that I drive around and mark my yard.
We have a A U P or someone.
Yeah, right. Well, the gas guy, someone who works where they're.
Columbia Pass. Yeah, yeah.
That would not meet that definition.
So he's okay.
Yeah, the guy, one guy that's like, I said, well, do you need to make a move? And then you get the guy that responds to the emergency if the truck's not available, right? Because it's a gas mark, right?
That's the. Consider. But if we're going to be that way than anything, you'll be parked as long as you drive it away.
No, but here's my question. Okay, my question is, so I drive this commercial vehicle and I park it on one side of the street for 72 hours. And then I move it to the other side of the street and I keep doing that where I play.
This is in the driveway.
Driveway. So what if I just park it on the side of the street next to my house for?
So so the right of way is a is a freely available park as long as it's not in violation of the of the signage. Right, that we've set down and use how they've set down. Okay. Then the signage could be encompassing any amount of rule sets, could be weight limits, could be plates, you know, that mean a certain criteria. I mean, once, you know, we see weight limits when we deal with semis, right? Things in larger commercial vehicles. Um, you know, there's it's one of those things to where, you know, Lester has been through this before. Because we've got people that this is their job, you know, and you got to consider that these people are paying their taxes as well. It's a it's a balancing act.
There's a there's a place on Maplewood that has a very large, I can haul a bobcat or backhoe or round trailer. That parks on the street and doesn't block anyone's driveway or mailbox. It's parked on the street.
Trailer has to be attached to the vehicle.
I believe.
Yeah, that's okay.
It's just a truck attached to it. But I mean, it's I don't know. I bring this up because I've heard people like you should make that they shouldn't be able to park there. I'm like, it's their job and the truck they need for their job. What are you mean? What apparently supposed to park their work vehicle when they're at home? Come on, of course they're going to park there. Is it annoying to go around? Yes, it is.
Especially when.
But it's but it's, you know, traffic calming. Like people pay money to get people to slow down and go around big things. They put islands in the middle of roads for that. So free traffic coming. There we go.
In any case, this still is not that because this is only a commercial vehicle in the driveway.
My question is, do you have anything to go back to?
Yeah, you would have to set something up for the right of way, maybe some signage. You didn't want something there, you know. Then the officers can go ahead and take it people. It's it's not a zoning enforcement at that point.
Okay.
Um, so that truck, the semi truck that's parked that parks over there.
Personal vehicle?
Well.
Could it's.
In the driveway?
No, it parks on the it parks on the street. It's not definitely on the driveway.
So he's allowed to.
Right now, he's allowed to park there until you assign it otherwise.
Okay, and even even with what we have written here, he's still allowed to do.
Yeah, this this pertains to drivers.
Okay, okay, gotcha. So are we saying, so are we making that, we're going to make that one 72, right? Letter B.
Seventy two.
Letter A, 72. Yeah, we're at X. I'm making 72 hours.
And then for the recreational one, the one that JP has been talking about, it says not longer than 72 hours. And three days between for loading and loading. Not sure I understand what.
What that means is 72 hours and they can bring it back up for three days. They got to move it after 72 hours and then three days need to pass and then they can bring it back for the 72 hours.
I wanted to change.
Essentially, essentially what they're saying is if you go for a weekend, you bring it in, you're gone for that weekend. You got to bring it back to unload it after your your weekend is over. So that's what it allows people to do in this case.
I know what I actually said, three days, and I thought that'd be good enough time, but it's actually not. I want to give them these five to seven days. And the reason why is you come back from RV trip. You got to unload that damn thing, wash that damn thing and all kinds of stuff. So that way it gives them five to seven.
I know.
Are you talking about the one in the driveway or are you talking about they're parking in the street?
No, they're if they're in their driveway, if they come home and they're pulling the driveway, getting ready to go out for a trip in the spring. And they bought it from the trailer, wherever you park it at, the campground, where you can park it and store it. To get that thing home, to clean it, to drain all your water out, put fresh water in or get ready for your trip is probably going to take a day. The next day is going to be food and stuff like that. Maybe the third day is cleaning. But this way they have time to work on their RV. What are they going to do to get on their trip and go? Plus, this neighborhood, it was a bunch of retired people when I moved in here and a lot of RVs were here all all the time anyway. So it was like.
And I'm also more confused with recreational vehicles shall be parked and require a front or side yard. Except for so I can park it in my yard, but not my driveway. So I can I got my required front yard.
As long as you have a suitable place to park it, right?
Yes, you have a problem.
Because it has to be on a an improved surface.
So I can put down garage, park my RV in the front of my yard, but I can't park it on my concrete driveway?
No, you can for 72 hours.
Yes, but.
Yes, if you make a special path to park your RV, you have fully announced that you want your.
Let's go.
Yeah, congratulations, you're an eyesore. If you want to get your driveway, you are merely a temporary eyesore and we are limiting that temporary eyesore to 72 hours.
I think you're not worried about a sore boat there, but.
I would. Jesse, one and two almost say the same thing right there.
Yeah, I you're right. I think that might have been a victim of redlining and not lining up squarely. So let me let me drop a comment here that sums up what you want and I will square it. Hold on one second.
What is?
New comment. You want. Shit, what page?
Oh, that's one. Sorry.
Jumped me back to an old comment.
166.
166. We wanted to say, here we go. Okay, clean this up. Commercial vehicles can't be in the driveway for more than 72 hours. Recreational vehicles. Can be in the driveway for.
Seven days.
Seven days.
Five to seven days?
No, five to seven days. Three days is not that's not enough time.
It's plenty of time.
No, it's not. It is not enough time. It is. I just explained myself.
And I disagree with your explanation. 72 hours is plenty of time.
It is not. Seven days. Seven.
Four days.
Seven. Seven. I'm on seven.
I made the world in seven days.
There you go. Seven days. Perfect. Seven days.
Oh, that's right. Six days. Do you have as much? Come on.
Seven.
I'll give you four.
I'm gonna say.
72 hours.
I'm gonna give you a half. I'm gonna give you a five.
I could say I could say five. I think five.
Five. Meet the half at five. If you so hold on, just real quick, if you're if it's the springtime and the in the fall time, you're going to be there longer. If you're coming here from summer.
Hold on. What's happening?
So Mark's Mark's point here that he was saying in jest, but if it's five, so if it's five days. That means you can just park there in the driveway all the time because they'll take it out for the weekend. They bring it there. It sits there five days. They take it out for the weekend. They bring it back. It sits there for five days. Right? If it's four days.
Same thing for three days.
Then they take three weekends. It sits there in the driveway three days. They take it out or four days. They take it out for a one weekend.
You're not giving them a part.
They take it out for one weekend. It's always in the driveway.
The whole there are already RVs in the driveway. Have them for the longest time.
Let me let me clean up the recreational vehicle parking. I I frankly, I look, it is enough time if they work hard. If they're motivated.
Yeah.
I mean, if you ask me, I think if you're able to put a RV or open your driveway and you want to. Because it's because it's your driveway and you're.
Four days.
I have I have a ninety six right now.
I would today. If we just want to drop it entirely.
Thank you. I'm cool with that.
If we're going to have a limit, it should be a real limit.
Yes, it shouldn't be a work. I I would agree with all that.
Something was that it's not international.
We got a number. Thank you, guys.
What's your number?
I I have it right now in what I'm going to clean up at 96 hours.
Done.
No, 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 hold on. I I think we have a better potential compromise. And that is Councilman Bruegger suggested that do we really need this at all? Like Councilperson Martin said, some people have them in the driveway all the time. Look, my my concern is if you're going to have a limit, it should be a real limit.
He's right. Let's just take it out.
At 96 hours.
Okay, yeah.
You're 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 it's always it's always there. So why don't we just always be there and that's fine.
Just take it out.
If you're fine with that.
I'm fine with taking it out. Let them have RVs in the driveway.
We do have control. They have to be.
They have to be functioning. They need to be registered.
Right, yeah.
In order, looking order.
Okay, so what?
No, we're not a trailer park.
Yeah, I'm not.
People don't, there's.
So this is the next problem. If you allow them all the time, you will have to be staying and then you will present another, there'll be another thing. Making a move at least, you know, corrects for this problem.
Cousin Eddie will show up for three months.
And then absolutely will happen.
But it says we're not getting rid of, you cannot use the hook it up permanently to power water.
Yeah.
And you can't use it as a bonus sign.
Yeah.
There's nothing, there's nothing to do. I'm just telling them once they're there, that's fine. Right? No, that's that is a different question than force, right?
What if we?
Just.
What if we just rejected all red light changes on this and revisited it outside of the zoning code?
I say let's just remove it while we're.
I this feels fraught.
We'll just be done with it. We'll just get over it right now. We'll just be done with it.
It's.
Yeah.
Yes.
The one complaint that we had quite a bit last year, or maybe it was before the building. That had multiple RVs and boats in the driveway. And that was something that we did get. I mean, I will just remind you guys that there are a lot of residents that don't want. I'm not first way. You guys, there are a lot of residents that do not want to see RVs. They don't want to see boats. They don't want to see it more than 72 hours. They sure as heck don't want to see two or three of them. And there is a there is a house that is within. Um, that I will tell you, we we get quite a bit of complaint on. And if you take it out, they will be able to do anything they want. I'm not saying that that's not a problem. I'm just saying. We allow complaints.
Still maybe, yeah, the limit would would be out. So people could put whatever they could squeeze in there. Um, they would squeeze. So we start having we start having all kinds of things show up in front of driveways and that that makes those definitions. Is it is it reasonable to limit the number of? It is. I mean, I I would say that that's a fair compromise, one of set items.
Deal.
You can pick your boat, your RV, your whatever, your trailer, right? You get one of them.
Deal.
And I would ask, what does, I'll just say my sister and brother in laws Mercedes Sprinter van that they converted into a small.
It's a nice expensive vehicle.
Yes.
That's not the it's a recreational vehicle sometime.
I mean, does that count as, I mean, it's not any bigger than a large van. It doesn't require any special driver's license to drive. I don't know if they RVs do or not.
No, it's just.
RVs don't. Yeah, okay.
It's like a converted bus kind of.
Yeah. Um, is that an RV? Because if you look at it, I mean, you can tell because it's a little raised and it's it's got some big air conditioner on, you know, air conditioner.
It's a it's a type of recreational vehicle.
Yeah.
Me said that right now. My parents' conversion van that we camped in anyways, that's a little less so. Right, because it wasn't, you know.
I did too. Okay, so what have I heard?
So I think we landed on, I think we landed on no time limit, but you're limited to one. I think that was the last proposal.
I just agree with that. I didn't agree to that.
I think folks would need to have a straw poll vote here. Okay, so as as a straw poll, I would say that I am okay with, right? Either 72 hours with at least 24 or 48 hours in between. I am okay with no time limit, but you're limited to one of said things. Those are the things I would be absolutely fine saying.
Let's straw poll that second one.
Or the second one. Being no time limit.
No time limit, but one.
Deal.
Anybody would be.
Deal.
So I got, so I got one, one, so I got two, okay, no for you, no, Mark?
I'd be okay with that.
Three.
No, we don't.
So right now, what I'm.
Why aren't you doing that?
Why not?
Because they weren't running out for Airbnbs or.
No, they're not, I see.
No, because they can't be.
They can't, they can't.
People are staying there.
I think we should move on and give us some time to draft some things.
Well, we'll bring something back to you, we'll be here when you want to.
Okay.
With American Power.
I don't, everyone's.
Twelve eighty-two, I'm not accessing maneuvering.
I think it will stretch.
Uh, which one is it, twelve eighty-two, what, what?
We're on page one sixty-seven.
I'm on page one sixty-seven.
Come on.
Oh, here's this adult entertainment business, which we technically don't have, but we have to have it in here in case we have to.
Uh, yes, because otherwise you're in trouble.
I'll get it.
Right.
We're good, I, I'll have it.
I stand.
So it starts there.
Starts there, runs through.
Access to.
Then we get fences and walls, so we can pass out, finish some walls.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a requirement there for, and Mike Flickinger to jump in on, in places, in landmarking.
Yeah, we, we wanted to, essentially, that wasn't one of the biggies, we wanted to make sure we covered our issues in the classic section, um, with being the age of pins, even be reset, and problematic issues of, you know, data's being changed, the platens put in place. Um, people who have, who do not have a survey, which is a lot of residents, but we want to require people get a survey done in their yard, because this ensures we do not have line issues, which we have run into already on multiple.
Does, do we need to have requirements about who does those?
It has, it has to be a professional surveyor.
So just professional, there's no licensing or anything?
No, they, they, they get it, they want.
Yeah, they have their own certification.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and they have it, they present it, we trust that it's a hundred percent accurate.
Oh, yeah, because it's, it's illegal, essentially, it's illegal down there.
Yes, and we say here, it is not our problem. You have gotten a survey, it says it's that, if the owner doesn't, if the adjacent owner doesn't like it, take it to court, not our, not our.
Between is a civil matter.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, we definitely have surveys, we don't want to arbitrate this. New doors.
All right.
Zip in, you're at one-twenty's.
I'm at home occupation, home occupation?
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, I counted, yeah, perfect.
And so that, I believe we actually went through with council, I think we all talked about this some months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be reasonably new, or, or we have these on overall.
Do you want to have anything on this section since we did discuss this last?
Okay. And I think we even did swimming pools pretty recently.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
We did.
Do you have a call?
Yeah, that was on here.
It's been a long day. Uh, like, for work, uh, quarter episode this morning, it's been a long time since then. Woo, chickens, ducks, and rabbits!
A building permit or a pool permit? Because.
You, you, you have to get a building permit in order to construct an in-ground pool, you have to do that in the building permit, which is kind of the residential.
So that's not enough.
But this says about according to prior installation of bare maintenance, or any swimming or wading pool that is capable of water depth of more than twenty-four inches.
We do have, we have temporary pool issues here, right, so I, I know, you were just talking about in-ground construction, in-ground construction.
Oh, wow, so we got a twelve eighty-one on the swimming.
The very first line says a building permit, so.
Yeah, and it doesn't say in-ground.
The violation permits are located in swimming or wading pools, people are, okay, I see what you're saying.
But we te, we technically have a pool.
We don't, we didn't, we, we copied, yes, we copied this code, so from, so yes, we ought to adjust that.
Okay, so we want, you want, you need a building permit for in-ground.
Right.
Um.
For real construction.
Yes.
Because, yeah.
The building permit to put it in, no, that's.
So, I mean, I just kinda wanna, since I have a pool, I've been down this road. Um, so, uh, I would not need to do our pool permit if I had to get a building permit.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's, yeah, it's back to, yeah, yes.
So building permit is for in-ground.
Yep.
And pool permit is for the temporary ones.
Right.
Okay. And then we spelled that out in here, or are we going to spell it out?
Well, obviously we did, Nick, I think we just cut it, cut it from bill one and then added the twenty-four, so I'll just put that out.
Right.
I'm just gonna drop two sections in, one, in-ground pool.
I mean, because we had a pool section before, and it sounds like we scrapped it and redid it rather than.
Yeah, that was a big ordeal.
Yeah, it was, and we, we had to, we, we found, from a planning zoning standpoint, and that came up, we found, Columbus was struggling with that problem too, and ended in a new code, so that's what the part of this is.
Cool.
That, the issue was the, uh, the advent of like the pools you just buy at Costco, the, like, temp pools, they're huge, yeah, full pools.
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
I know, I'm well aware.
Cool.
Right.
That's it, that's it?
Alright, I will get, it's mine, right, together, clean up those comments, we'll get, buy like, his remaining comments to Mike Flickinger in a few places that he hadn't caught, that we had missed also, uh, and try, try to come up with some, uh, do the recreational versus commercial, uh, parking, and then some conditions for zoning districts, uh, on safety, so traffic noise.
Yeah, we'll have some, we'll have some additional sections to kind of go over that, we'll have that at another meeting, obviously, if it's handled, that and other.
Yeah.
Well, and we haven't even touched chapter fourteen.
Um, chapter fourteen, unless you have some major.
Well, we moved over a lot in fourteen.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we moved all the fences over. We got rid of stuff that was, uh, not applicable, because some of that was written before the two thousand eight state building code changes, and so most of that can be eliminated, moved over, and obviously the only thing left, really, in chapter fourteen's gonna be our property maintenance code section, which was adopted a few years back.
Is that the Airbnb section?
I don't know, you gave it to us for us to review.
We, yeah, because.
We, we have to show you everything that changed.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just telling you that most of that, we either moved it, or we, or eliminated from chapter, the only thing, really, the only thing that shouldn't be left is that one. Yeah, we can go through it real quick on a different day.
I just don't have it. But I do have some questions.
Is that the Airbnb section?
Yes.
Are we not, is that a different meeting?
That'll be a different meeting, I mean, it's a, it's a lot, it's a lot, it's a lot, I.
Some of that's not a vote, it's.
But the only thing I was gonna say is like, why can't we just deduct what New York City did, which is the property owner has to be present?
You can't, you just need, I just need, uh, four votes, that, you know, I just gotta, I, I have, you know. I'm in a bit of a bind as to what to draft.
Right, right, that's, that's.
That's it.
Airbnb codes is in my.
Um. It is.
As long as.
That's wrong.
I think we have enough older people who might like to snowbird in Florida and be gone for three months and wanna make passive income to cover it, but I think that's unable to, uh, potentially non-zero.
Okay, so you didn't just need.
I mean, well, I mean, you're just making up stuff that we're gonna get overrun with Airbnb people too, so.
I'm telling you that this is a problem in different neighborhoods, so we should be proactive, all of New York City just passed, but you're.
So what was, if I may, let's just go, I, so there are some examples, you know, locally, more than abroad, so I'm gonna jump on a little, every other's. I think I always call it caution on the beer base stuff, because we, we, to date, we have not seen a problem.
Okay.
Alright, I just wanna point that out.
And I would say New York City with the kite's cost of housing and even tourism, and its draw on tourist place, is not necessarily about apples to apples, I mean, it's a big apple to a little village comparison.
I think the only thing that concerns me with the Airbnbs, and I've said this in probably every single meeting we've talked about it, is the extreme short term, um, I don't have a problem with the three months, somebody leaving and going out of town for three months, or somebody renting their house for a month, or something like that, I think it's the Friday, Saturday night parties and things like that, it's all brave until it's your next-door neighbor, um, that's renting it out, I'm not trying to do that in my backyard, and I don't know that you can do it, but it was just.
Yeah, you can, it's not, it's the thirty days, and if you wanna do less than thirty days, then the property owner should be present, and that's it, and it's not a big deal.
But again, so if, if the concerns are safety, noise, parking, we have codes that are already addressing these things.
Correct.
So to limit one's ability to do their, oh, I was not done speaking, to limit one's ability to use their property to their own best benefit is, is onerous, right, when we already have codes that address your concerns.
What I'm saying is, I don't feel confident that the code that we have fully addresses the concerns in a way that are enforceable.
Okay, then what, tell me more about those concerns and how they're not addressed.
My concern is, all of that is fairly arbitrary, that noise concern by the time the police get there, or whatever, how is that gonna work with the police department? We're putting more, it's easier to prevent than to treat, is all I'm saying, so it's easier to say, hey, we, you can't have this here, instead of being, oh, now it's a problem, let's use our resources and waste village dollars in order to enforce all this stuff, it's gonna cost us more money to do that, and you have to be cognizant of that when you're on council, and save our property owners their tax dollars.
I would, I would say it's, it's next to impossible to prevent, right, unless we are, unless we have some.
Wait, you can't just outlaw it?
Exactly, oh, we can outlaw it, of course we can outlaw it, but, but outlawing, outlawing doesn't prevent behavior. Outlawing gives you the opportunity to punish for that behavior.
What it does is it, it deters behavior, you can't, what do you mean, no?
I, I, I mean, no, I mean, that if, if you outlaw it, and I still wanna put my finger on Airbnb.
So you said sealing is fine now, more people will seal because it's fine, yeah.
What I'm, what I'm telling you is that.
You can't stop crime, but you can prevent it.
That the behavior, right, is, if, if, if the behavior that you want to persuade is, is noise, is unsafe activities, is crappy parking, that's where enforcement needs to live. If your concern is people renting their property, that's entirely different things.
My concern is another nuisance that we have to deal with and spend our dollars dealing with.
Why do you assume that Airbnb users are nuisances?
Because there's a lot of instances in our area where it has become a problem, and I'm trying to be proactive, again, about this, and you seem to think that that is not a problem.
And what percent of Airbnb users are nuisances?
I'm not gonna argue with you about this. Okay, are we even in this section, or are we just having an?
No.
Is that really?
Okay, so maybe, I, again, I know this is a conversation that we've had a couple times, and it still needs to come to an agreement, one way or another, but I see chickens, ducks, and rabbits, and I think all of us already love to eat, um, chokes. There's a big chicken, ducks, and rabbits picture of those.
Yeah.
This is actually a perfect place to end tonight because.
It's the end.
This is the end.
We also have goats, and we also have rats.
Goats.
Um. We can, we can have those in there, like, for the regular.
So I think, because of the current situations that we've seen in the last week, um, I know that I've been told rats is probably gonna have to go to the health department, and we're gonna have to reach out to them.
Do people raising rats, is that your opinion?
So when, again, so the question is whether it's a tax situation or they're raising rats.
Correct, so I think at least if we're addressing it, it is.
Say, do we have someone try, said, well, I have a, 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 breeding rats in the bay?
Yeah, we should put that on there, no rats.
These are misfeeders, oh, yeah, right, where you're.
I mean, what's the difference between a pet and a medical lab rat?
What's wrong with this?
They are, they're feeding.
What?
Rats, ducks, and rats.
How do rats?
Rats and cats.
They're raising them.
Yes.
I, I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm not saying they're not rats, but I.
Are they, are they, I remember what we included, like, are they, are they raising or grazing, or are they more domestic?
Is it a new area?
Alright, I'm not a professional in rats, however, if this was next door to me, I would probably murder my house out, like.
And also like, you smell like snakes, right?
If there were snakes, this is, this is the equivalent of snakes to me.
Is it, is it either someone's moan?
It's, it's, so, so is it a, two or three rats? I don't know if they're raising the rats, I don't know if there's just half, for pets, like, a couple pets.
Yeah, rats and pets before.
I don't have a problem with someone raising rats. I don't have a problem with someone having rats as pets, but if they have rats as a nuisance, right?
That's a different.
That's a pest.
Same thing, same thing if I had a lot of cats, it's the same problem, right, if I have more than will be allowed.
Maybe rats are, rats are a little more pest killer than, than fair.
Cats, well, they can breed, cats breed faster.
Cats, cats breed faster than this.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
And they use this.
So, so in this, I'm just, once again, bringing to your attention, I think everybody knows that we've now, there's been a goat, I don't know if that's something that.
No.
Goat typically never rolls away.
I'm sorry, so, I, I don't know if this is.
We don't allow them as a, we don't allow them as, if there, if someone has a goat, and it's the same thing, I, I would hate to say that a pot-bellied pig, but these are not, these are not defined as cats, these are defined as an air polchlorian, so if there's an issue, we can enforce that issue,[1751.32]